Welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, February 26, 2018. Before we get to any of our regular business on the agenda, this is one of our favorite times of year when Commander P. Tac from the VFW comes and presents our essay winners, one for the Voice of Democracy and one for the Patriots Pen, our two local celebrities for the evening. So Commander, I'm going to turn it over to you and then obviously we'll open it up to the board. I also know that Representative Murray's here with the citation as well as Mark Reel from Senator Fatman's office. So we're all here for the girls tonight and we want to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The Voice of Democracy and the Patriots Pen are the two veterans of foreign wars scholarship programs that are run in the schools from grade six through 12 and allows the students in those grades to participate in patriotic essays, which this year, I'm happy to say, we had a winner in both contests, one in the Voice of Democracy and one in the Patriots Pen through our district, District Eight. And before I go any further, if you will allow me, I would like to present to you Erin Wheeler. She's our Voice of Democracy winner and on behalf of District Eight, the Commander Greg Gensler was not able to be here tonight, so he's giving you the award, I'm giving you the award from District Eight that you need to receive yet. Thank you very much. This is Marin Halpin. She is the Patriot Pen winner and once again, on behalf of District Eight and Commander Gensler, I would like to present you with this award from District Eight. Now that I have introduced the girls, you can go ahead and present the other awards if she'd like.
Okay, great. I'm going to open it up to my fellow board members, but I want to just say congratulations and thank you for coming and sharing your experience with us. And I imagine hopefully we can hear a few words from you ladies without putting you on the spot about your experience, but I'd just like to turn it over to the board first. Bill?
I just want to thank you for contributing to something that's bigger than yourselves, that talks about the things, the values and ideals that we hold dear and representing your community. I want to say thank you on behalf of the veterans, on behalf of the community, on behalf of everybody that you represent. It's more than just your family, although they're very proud. It's your community that's also proud of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mike?
You're in a unique situation. You're actually sitting here tonight and you have three former school committee members and you have two current school committee members. And these are the events that make us very, very proud of what we do every single day in the school district is that young people like yourselves get involved and you do great things. You do great things and I talk about it all the time. It's not all about grades. It's not all about grades. It's all about who you are and where your passion is and what you follow every single day in life. And, you know, thank you, thank you so much for doing that, what you've done. I ask you to please continue on. You know, I talk about it all the time, and the service that men and women give to this great nation, you just can't top it. And for young people like you to get involved and do what you did, thank you so, so much. And my recommendation is keep going, keep going and congratulations, great job. Thank you.
Is there anything that either one of you or hopefully both of you, again without putting you on the spot, would just like to talk about your experience or your essays or anything else that you'd like to address?
Thank you for like all the congratulations. It does mean a lot. I thought it was great to just take this opportunity and I'm very thankful to have had it and I just thought it was great to see other people who were so engaged in their communities as well, especially getting to the district level. So it was just a really great experience and I'm very glad I did it and I'll definitely continue to be doing it.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you all. I really enjoyed the whole experience and like really reflecting on like the opportunities that we all have every day and I'll keep on doing it and thank you.
Again, welcome. Thank you ladies. And in addition to everything else, you're two very well-spoken young ladies on top of everything else. I think we're going to see great things come out of you two and you're two more young people that we get to see each year that make Milford very proud. So again, thank you. We have citations from the Board of Selectmen. I'd also like to give Representative Murray the opportunity to say a few words if you'd like to, Brian? Or issue your citation now, whatever you'd like.
Yeah, sure. Do you want me to?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, okay. It's like coming back home.
Feel free to grab a mic if you want.
I was going to say, you want to sit in your chair?
No, 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 this is okay. I'm right here. Bill's taking good care of it. Yeah. Yeah, no, it does feel like home. But yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having me here. And, you know, I also want to commend Commander P. Tac in the VFW. How long have you been putting this on now?
This is the fourth year we've had it.
Yes.
Every year since we started, thanks to the Milford School System and the teachers in the grades that are running for the Patriots Pen and the BOD, we've had someone on the board every year since we started for four years. And for four years, we've had somebody at the state final.
That's wonderful, you know, and it's wonderful and we've talked about this before, that you and the VFW have taken this on to really kind of bring this forward for the young people in the community. You know, I really want to thank you for that effort. And also, as was alluded to, really, we really do need to recognize the Milford Public Schools for working with you, your teachers, your staff. You know, they want you to succeed, they want to help you and clearly they did and I think their efforts really shown through with yours. You know, I think all of us, as, you know, we watched in horror the recent events that happened down in Florida at Parkland and the aftermath, one thing that really shines through on that is to realize just how powerful and truthful the voices of our young people can be. And I think you are prime examples of that, getting involved, talking about what's happening in our country, the government that we have, issues that we face. You know, folks like you have to step forward and really set the record straight, put us on the right course and you've done that in your way by being part of this essay contest. And I agree with the chairman, this is not the end, this is a start for you. This is really a beginning and you have so much to look forward to. And I'm certainly proud as a member of the town of Milford for what you did and I know your families are very proud as well. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm, you know, I have the citations and I know Senator, Mark Reel is here also.
Okay, no, thank you. Mark, do you want to come on up? Senator Fatman couldn't make it tonight, but Mark Reel, his constituent director for the-
District-
District Director. Excuse me, I actually knew that.
He has many hats.
Well, it's weird to sit at a neighboring selectman's table.
That's right. Also a selectman from Mendenham.
So unfortunately, the senator couldn't be here tonight, but I think he would echo all the statements made to you this evening and he would be very proud to be here with you and just know that he sends his congratulations. And I have citations as well, but if you want to read them first, you can.
Yeah, feel free.
Good.
Yeah. Okay. So, these are from the House of Representatives as follows. Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offer its sincerest congratulations to Erin Wheeler in recognition of your prize-winning essay in the Voice of Democracy essay contest sponsored by the VFW Post #1544, which placed sixth at the state VFW runoff. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 26th day of February 2018. Signed, Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and offered by myself, Brian Murray, your state representative and admirer. And there is also one for, and I'm sorry, is it Marin?
Yes.
Marin, okay. Marin Halpin. When we first did it, I thought I had a typo on your name, but it's a very unusual and pretty name. And this is in recognition of your prize-winning essay in the Patriots Pen essay contest sponsored by VFW Post 1544, which placed fifth at the state VFW runoff. Congratulations to you both.
Thank you.
May I say one thing? There were 13 seats up there on the stage. Out of a possible 1,200 to 1,500 essay entrants, they were in the top 13 at the state.
Wonderful. Very proud of it.
Okay, and here I have from the State Senate, an official citation, which reads, "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Erin Wheeler in recognition of winning the VFW's Voice of Democracy Essay Award. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk." And it is, again, signed by the President of the Senate and your state Senator, Ryan And the, for Marin, it says the same thing. "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Marin Halpin in recognition of winning the VFW's Patriot Pen Essay Award. Be it further known, the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success and the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk." Congratulations.
And last but not least, "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to Marin Halpin in recognition of receiving the Patriots Pen Award for your essay, America's Gift to My Generation. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 26th day of February 2018. Signed by Michael K. Walsh, William D. Buckley, and Will Keen-Kate." "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations to Erin Wheeler in recognition of receiving the Voice of Democracy Award for your essay, American History: Our Hope for the Future. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this 26th day of February 2018. Again, also signed by Michael K. Walsh, William D. Buckley, and Will Keen-Kate. Congratulations." Gentlemen, is it possible if we do a little recess, we could get a photo? All right, great. Dan, can we take a recess and we'll return back to regular session after we get these young ladies in the local papers?
All set.
Thank you, welcome back to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, February 26. We had a brief recess. We're now going to the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we sign that warrant. And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll also vote in the affirmative and make that unanimous. We have approval of the February 12th meetings for the regular session.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman. I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor and that's unanimous. We also have executive session meetings for February 12th.
Moved, second.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Next, we're going to go off schedule, off agenda here and invite Ray Ogerup. Oh, and Joe Calery. All right, welcome, Joe.
Thank you for seeing us.
No, not a problem. Just so you know, Ray reached out to me and wanted to, we couldn't get him on the agenda for this meeting, so rather than waiting for two more meetings, he was going to come during invitation to speak and present something that's on his mind and that he's been working on for a little bit.
Yep, Mr. Calery and myself would love to organize a Fourth of July parade. And we want to make it easy and pretty much mirror the Santa Parade. Same route, same idea.
Same idea, you know.
Just less clothing, I guess.
We figured you always have all the other parades, Memorial Day Parade, Santa Parade, but I remember growing up around here, we always went to the parade. It was always a Fourth of July parade. It was always something. I know we always talk about it, but I talked to Ray about it and he was on board, so we figured we'd try to work this ourselves and we're just really looking for your support.
Like to build a new tradition for Milford.
Well, I think that's a, my first instinct is that that's a great idea. I know offline, we both were able to, you know, you guys certainly shared that idea with me. I think anytime we can celebrate something here in Milford, especially when you two gentlemen are involved in a lot of other festivities in town, whether it's the Santa Parade or the Music Social, and again, Ray, I can't thank you enough for even putting local music on the scene here with the help of a lot of your friends and everything. And Joe, I know you're involved with that too and I just, you know, that I wanted to make sure that people are aware of everything that you do behind the scenes and in front, quite honestly. But we also hear you on the radio every day and I think my FM is also lucky to have you and in turn, we are as well.
Guys are going to make me cry.
No, no, you do a lot of work. And again, this is stuff that we're constantly talking about over the last few years, quality of life issues, Milford pride, this is the stuff we're proud of, this is the stuff that we need people to come to the forefront and talk about.
Joey and I have young kids, as many of us do, and we'd really like them to grow up and, I mean, not that it's not a wonderful town as it is, but we know it can be better. And I think we want to work harder from this point on to make sure that our kids grow up in a town that they can be proud of as well.
Might not be the best one, the first round, but we're going to try our best to get it bigger and bigger, bigger every year, too.
But it can only grow. I mean, I'm going to turn it obviously over to the board, too. Generally, during invitation to speak, we listen and go, but I think this is something, again, that, you know, if there's any comments or concerns that we should start here, because obviously there's work for you folks to be done, I'd like to get some rough idea of whether the board is supportive of this and then you obviously can go and work with the logistics, the things that we need to approve and then, and go from there. Bill?
Yeah, I can think of no better reason to celebrate than the birth of our nation, so why not? You know, I would make all the resources available from our office that we can and help coordinate if there's anything that you need in terms of contact with individuals. I would involve police, fire, you know, the folks that, veterans, if veterans are interested, right? They're why we're here tonight.
That's right.
But thank you. You know, one of the things I want to make sure I say is thank you for bringing this forward, because if not for some citizen actions and citizen activity, it's not always going to be government that organizes or coordinates things. And so I want to thank you on behalf of the community, both of you, for bringing this idea forward, bringing it back. And again, you know, if we can't celebrate the birth of our country, then I don't know, you know, what we would celebrate. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, Mike.
Interesting that the both of you are here this evening. I've had a couple of people reach out to me recently and asked if possible, and I was not aware of this, that the Symphony doesn't play at the Fourth of July fireworks anymore. And they said it would be really so nice if you could get the Symphony back to the Fourth of July celebration for the music, just like at the Hatch Shell in Boston. So for you two gentlemen to come before us tonight now, say you want to have a parade, outstanding, outstanding.
I think in the future, we see this building into a celebration after a parade.
Right.
You know, spilling out into a field, whether it's plains or wherever, and then having an afternoon of festivities where something like that could occur.
Yeah, and again, I speak about is that when you, when the three of us walk in parades or three of us are standing by the Santa Parade at Town Hall as it's going by, as an elected official, it gives you so much pride, because you feel like you're representing a community where people are engaged. And this is a community where people are engaged. We just saw our presentation earlier to two young girls. It's a great, great community. I support you 100%. I'll help you in any way that I can, but you know what? It's just going to make the Fourth of July just a great day. And to Selectman Buckley's point, there's no better way than celebrate the birth of our nation than to get everybody involved, everybody involved. So thank you. Thank you 100%.
Thank you. Like we said, we've been toying with this for quite some time, you know.
We missed last year.
Schedule, yeah, we wanted to do last year, but we didn't.
That's all right.
My schedule, his schedule, it's impossible. So we just now, we're going for it and see what we can do.
I think one of the biggest things we need from you guys is qualifying this as a town event, to save a little money here and there. So if we can get your support in that aspect and have the town's support as a town event and we will work for you to put this event on.
Okay. I think for tonight, since you came during invitation to speak, what we'll do is, obviously, I think you know that all three of us are very supportive of it. So I think, you know, going forward at your next steps, I think that we can officially put you on the agenda and then anything logistically we can start to, you know, check off the list one by one, we'll certainly do that.
Fantastic.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
In the meantime, work with our office and Rick. Good to see you.
Joey, good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Ray.
Good to see you again.
No problem.
Ray, how you doing?
Thank you.
Good, reach out, we've got some ideas.
All right.
Okay?
First public hearing and scheduled appointments is with our benefits coordinator regarding insurance rates. Kelly?
And this is to discuss the group health, dental, and life insurance rates for our renewal date, which is May 1.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And gentlemen, this is Brian Boyle Jr., a healthcare consultant.
Welcome back.
Nice to see you all.
Unfortunately, I don't have celebratory stuff to discuss, but it's not bad news, it's just not as interesting as the previous speakers.
I was going to say, if the rates are down, you do have something to celebrate.
No, it just doesn't seem to be the theme of the evening, but.
Well, we know that if people are contributing to that Fourth of July celebration, they'll be insured as a result.
Yeah. I think we had a relative, you know, we had a relatively uneventful renewal process this year. We had a relatively good rate come from the health insurance company, a 5.2%. We were pretty pleased with that. And our dental plan has gone up 2.5%, which we're still lower than our 2016 rate. And Boston Mutual has offered us a zero, or no rate increase this year, so.
And that's the third year in a row, right?
I believe it's the third year in a row now. So I'm here tonight looking for a vote. These rates were voted upon by the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And I'm just looking to, looking for approval of the rates.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we take the advice of the Insurance Advisory Committee and for the benefits effective May 1st, 2018. The Blue Cross Blue Shield reflecting a 5.2% increase, Delta Dental representing a 2.5% increase, and Boston Mutual Life representing a premium rate that is consistent with last year.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before I second that motion, Kelly, I just want to say thank you. A lot of people don't realize what your department does on a daily basis for all the employees of this community, so I just want to say thank you, great job. It's a very important role to all the employees of this community. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
And I will also vote in favor and make that unanimous. And coincidentally, driving over here, prior to driving over here, listening to the news, the federal numbers were at 16.5% increase for the federally subsidized care coming here, so.
It's just, I know, so when I-
Going up, I understand how you present it, but it's only, it's 5%.
Yeah, knowing what some of the others, other increases we've been hearing, it was relatively good news, so.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you again and thank the IEC for it, please.
Will do. Thank you.
Have a good night. Take care. Next scheduled appointment is Mike Dean, our town engineer, regarding Enron Power and Charles River Watershed. And he has Julie Wood with him, Director of Projects for the Charles River Watershed. How are you?
Good.
Good. Hi.
Okay.
How are you?
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing all right.
Good. Okay, as you just mentioned, Mike Dean, town engineer. We're here with Julie Wood from Charles River Watershed Association and we're here tonight to discuss an opportunity that has presented itself from CRWA. CRWA, as most people know, they work on improving the water quality of Charles River and some other waters in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So through their efforts, they have secured funding in the amount of $200,000 to be used towards storm water management projects. Let's see, so these funds also are a result of negotiations between CRWA and Milford Power LLC, which is the power plant down at the end of National Street.
Okay.
So I'm assuming they chose to work with the town of Milford because the power plant is in the town of Milford. So of the $200,000, $50,000 will be towards design work, dealing with watersheds and design, storm water management regulations, things of that nature. And $150,000 will be towards constructing the actual infrastructure and/or implementing some best management practices, or BMPs.
Okay.
All of this work will complement the EPA's storm water management regulations, the good old MS4 permit. So I'm here to convey the fact that I think it's a good opportunity for, one, to create a working relationship with the CRWA and obviously to take advantage and utilize $200,000 to best, to better the storm water system of the town of Milford.
Okay.
So with that, I turn it over to Julie and if she has anything else to add, and if not, we can answer some questions.
Julie, is there anything you'd like to add?
Sure. I would like to echo that we're excited to possibly partner with Milford. We have a lot of partnerships with, we have 35 cities and towns in the Charles River Watershed, either all are part in the watershed. And a lot of the storm water management decisions, really all the storm water management decisions happen at the local level, so we really like engaging with the communities. We haven't had a chance to work with Milford recently, or more than recently, I guess, as long as I've been at CRWA, which is 10 years. So we're excited that we do have this opportunity. And so what we're, you know, putting forward to the town and hoping you guys would agree with is of the 200,000, we can use 50,000 to do some planning, sort of identify good opportunities to treat storm water, good opportunities to maybe infiltrate storm water. So that would sort of be the first step, look at a particular area, identify good opportunities with the goal of, as Mike referred to, helping to mitigate some of the increased water use that will be happening at the power plant as they're expanding their capacity there. So obviously, they're a big water user and they take water from the river and the treatment plant and the water company. So we'd like to mitigate some of those impacts, but first we need to figure out the best way to do that. And then we would have money to construct something and the idea would be to also use some of that money that we're getting through this agreement to possibly leverage some state funds. So that might be sort of a next step, because there are some state grants for doing storm water construction projects that are available, but communities have to put up a local or non-federal match. So it may, having that money may actually allow the town to leverage some more money coming in.
Right, and that was one of my first questions was, well, if we join this effort, how much money do we have to come up with? So I don't, they haven't, CRWA hasn't portrayed that we have to go and acquire or put up a lot of money to do this as well. It's just if it ends up being that way, knowing that we have to start implementing best management practices and this infrastructure for the EPA, then so be it. But we don't necessarily have to acquire or put an article forward to go grab 150 just because we're working with the CRWA. So that was one of my concerns upfront and it hasn't been conveyed that we have to do that. If we decide to go forward with the grant and seek a grant, this can be combined with $150,000. So if we seek additional monies, now we have a potential $300,000 project, things of that nature. But if that doesn't move forward, then we can still just utilize the 150,000.
Great. Any questions?
So 50,000 is for planning, 100, I'm sorry, 150,000 is for submissions to grants or actual work?
Construction, actual construction of the infrastructure, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The infrastructure, these best management practices, detention basins, things of that nature.
And at this point, there's no request for matching funds or anything from the town at this point?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think we should be able to put together an agreement with Charles River Watershed Association, passed by town council and outlining the things that, you know, so that we can make it formal. But for the purposes of tonight's discussion, you know, I can't think of a reason why we wouldn't want to be, you know, working with Charles River Watershed Association on this work. We know that the EPA's MS4 permits and requirements are coming down. We don't know all of the details yet because there's been some delay. We don't know if the DEP will be acting on behalf of the EPA. That still remains uncertain, but, or at least the last I heard. So, yeah, I'm encouraged by this and it makes sense. Okay. All right. Yeah, I think we should be able to put together an agreement with Charles River Watershed Association, passed by Town Council, and outlining the things that, you know, so that we can make it formal. But for the purposes of tonight's discussion, you know, I can't think of a reason why we wouldn't want to be, you know, working with Charles River Watershed Association on this work. We know that the EPA's MS4 permits and requirements are coming down. We don't know all of the details yet because there's been some delay. We don't know if the DEP will be acting on behalf of the EPA. That still remains uncertain, but, or at least the last I heard. So, yeah, I'm encouraged by this, and it makes sense.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Mike?
I think what's important about tonight is that from the sidelines, when you listen to the news and you watch everything that's been discussed about stormwater management in the past, it seems like everybody's got their own agenda. Nobody's really communicating. So to have something like this come before us where you're actively now, you know, working together, you know, through a grant, but this communication, this communication, and through communication, things can only get stronger, you know? And I think it's the first time personally for myself that I've seen since stormwater management's come out that a group has come together and said, "We want to work together."
It's a joint effort, yeah.
Yeah, well, a joint effort. We, you know, we understand it's coming, and, you know, we want to, we want to work together to make it what it needs to be. So I, you know, I commend you for that, both of you, and I agree. Yep. I would move forward with it. Absolutely. Thank you.
Now, I imagine you are going to want a vote taken tonight to formalize the agreement, or are we at that stage?
No, we're not at the stage of formalizing the agreement or anything.
This is just a preliminary, okay.
This is just to present the opportunity that's in front of us, making sure that we sure though can.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping us in the loop and keeping us in front of it. Thank you, Mike.
Absolutely. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care now.
Is there a reason, does your town administrator's report have anything that would affect Kevin and his group coming up first, or...
No, it does not.
Okay. Well, then I will go out of order and ask Kevin Lobeser regarding the Middle School East and his attorney, Joe Antalus, to come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you all tonight?
Good. Welcome. Kevin, welcome back.
We're good. How are you?
Super fine. Excited to be here.
So aren't we?
Also, so...
Great.
I'll let Kevin do the campus stuff, and I'll do the administrative stuff.
Thanks, Joe.
Oh, God. Buy one of these.
Shorter commute.
Yeah, I don't know. Is that your hat?
Yeah.
Okay. It's it there. I don't know. I know. I thought maybe you left them there as an advertisement or something. What was the building hats all over?
Rob stickers.
I know that, you know, primarily you were here tonight to talk about the moving forward on the, on the purchase and sales agreement for the sale of the Middle School East property. But we thought we'd take just a moment, if you could, to also bring you up to date on where we are about moving forward with a rezoning article that will allow for the rehabilitation of this property. Obviously, it's my understanding that not only did the town want to sell the property, but the town wanted to see this property reused in a meaningful way as soon as possible. So Kevin has agreed to purchase the building, and I think you've agreed to sell it to him. And he has taken the efforts early on to show you an architectural rendering of what he intends the Middle School East to look like for the rest of Milford's future. And I, I think you can see that there's been a significant amount of effort placed into the architectural, obviously, from the standpoint, for Kevin, the building will be used for a single purpose, and that will be residential apartments. And it is our understanding at this point that those apartments will be set aside for people who are 55 years of age and older. I've talked to Kevin about this specifically, and I think that an over 55 apartment building in downtown Milford is going to be actually probably closer to an over 70-year-old apartment building, because I think that, you know, basically, people are just staying younger and being more active. But we see this, and Kevin sees this, as a transitional building for people who want to sell their homes and stay in Milford. And so you see what the building will look like from Main Street. Kevin has gone out of his way to preserve the original structure, which was built, you know, for St. Mary's Parish at that time, the building that I'm most fond of, which is the gym, because that's where I played high school basketball. Not so much the cafeteria. We didn't use the cafeteria at Milford High School, just the gym. That is going to come down. So the gym building and the cafeteria building will be raised. There's a significant expense in doing that, because we're right on the street line. There's going to be a tremendous amount of preparation that goes into that. And at the present time, the way Kevin's figured it, he anticipates that he'll be able to get 36 one- and two-bedroom units in there, a mix of those type of units. I was able to get a heads-up that the town meeting warrant was going to be closing soon, and reacted and asked the administrator place a, put a placeholder on a zoning article, and then went right to work on preparing a zoning article. And I've spent considerable time with Larry Duncan, and we have, I think, the meats and bones of an article. We've got to just do a little bit more reworking on the parking configurations and the, and the requirement for parking. This article, which I'm hoping either the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board will join in the sponsor for, will be for both the CB and CA districts, with a little bit of tweaks, depending on which district you are. If you're in the CB district, which Kevin is in, we're going to require that the parcel property be a minimum of 1.5 acres. We've looked at the other parcels available and believe that the best way to do this in the future of Milford, to use this, if this works out, is probably for people to marry parcels together to be able to do a project going forward. Once we get into the CA district, which is basically the real downtown, the old, what we all call downtown, where some of the multi-story buildings are, we would again be looking at over 55, but only on the second, third, and fourth floors, retail only on the first floor. In the CB district where Kevin is, we're going to stay away from the retail, and this, we're not going to prohibit it, but Kevin wants to stay away from it, and I think appropriately so, because this building was never used retail. So it's not like we're taking up retail space and changing it into residential. We're taking another use and converting it solely into residential. So that's basically just the backdrop of where we are. I would venture to say that I'm probably maybe two, three hours of arguing away before we get the zoning bylaw worked out. I obviously got to have it, I'll have Jerry vet it, and I'll run it through, through Mr. Valani, but we're very, very close to having it done. I've got a couple of preliminary views of it here, so much to the point that both Larry and I sent emails to each other on Friday that crossed, and when we opened them up, it looked like we had each written each other's bylaws. So I think that's a good sign. I hope you think it's a good sign, so. But that's where we are, and I, I think I've said enough. Kev can talk about his own plans for, but that gives you just an idea of where we are. And again, I think you get a good idea of the visualization. We also have a little site plan done, which I passed out, which shows, excuse me, how we would configure the property relative to parking. And again, you can see the area that will be the new addition, the parking areas on both Summer and Winter Streets. No access directly onto Main Street, so we won't have any new curb cuts coming out. Everything will be on those two side streets. So that's, that's where we are. Very excited about. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to work with Kevin on this. I, you know, as you know, I have a, a, a long affinity for the town of Milford and for the redevelopment, and I'm very excited to be involved in any reclamation project on Main Street. So thanks, Will.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm not sure what to add with that, guys, because I wasn't even sure where we were going for tonight anyway. So, I mean, I, I obviously wanted to take the opportunity to give you guys a full-size look of how we were envisioning the site to be, so to see the handouts. And I know that you guys never saw my vision on the building, because, as you know, when I responded to the RFP, that was really just an alternate in my, you know, I didn't want to even really put those plans in there until I thought that was the flavor of most of the people in town, which, we have met with Planning Board as well. I don't think there's anybody on the Planning Board that didn't like the, or love, in my opinion, loved the idea.
I know the Planning Board has been talking about residential units on Main Street for some time, so that's why when you first submitted this, that...
Yeah.
By, by asking for it to go over to planning and zoning and just getting you FaceTime with them to see how it was, they were part of the process from the beginning. That's why we put off the vote until tonight. And that's what tonight is really, and I know we kind of put you on the spot today, but we, you know, the board is, you know, going to decide whether or not to move forward and accept the bid. And I think seeing this, this rendition of the building, which is pretty impressive, and again, there's a huge emotional attachment to that building as well. And we've seen that, anyone involved has seen that over the last 20 years on town meeting floor, when it's been trying to be used for an addition as a school, when other people in the past talked about raising it. It's just that, that looks better than I, than I even thought it could be.
Yeah, and I think it's going to look even better. Well, I mean, you know, I know in the RFP, it talked about local knowledge, working with the boards, you know, wanting to be, you know, part of the community, basically. When I went to see the Planning Board last week, you know, they were all saying, "Kevin, you're going to have to have a lot of patience. This could take years to get the zoning and all that stuff." And I said, "Look, guys, I'm, you know me by now. I want to work this thing out, but definitely patience is not going to be a word. Anybody that knows me is going to, you know, deal with..."
Not you two.
Well, and truthfully, I mean, Joe, I didn't talk to Joe until after the Planning Board meeting, and, you know, and I realized that, I said, "You know, I, I really need someone that really is just as enthusiastic about the downtown area as I am, and I, I don't want to go grab, you know, a bylaw attorney from Boston or something like that." I mean, I just felt like Joe was the right, you know, choice, and I've never even worked with Joe. I mean, I've seen him at Planning Board meetings for 20 years. And we had a great meeting the day after the Planning Board meeting, and like Joe said, within, within two days, we felt pretty good about what we were putting together for the bylaw. But, I mean, whether or not that's what happens or not, but...
Kevin was in my office the other morning, and I left a meeting with him, went upstairs, and there was a message from Mr. Valani, giving me the knowledge about what was going on with the warrant. So all of that happened just on that groundswell. And organic and fast, right? In one day, we went from, whoa, okay, boom. So, and when he left, we were talking about the fall town meeting, but he was wishing for the spring town meeting. So it worked out, and we're really, really excited about it.
I mean, my opinion is the school is not helping anybody, just sitting there, and sitting there, and sitting there. So that's my...
No, and you're certainly solving that problem as well, because a lot of us, and I sound like a broken record, but who grew up with the Stacy Middle School boarded up for most of their life.
Yeah.
We did not need that on Main Street.
Yeah.
Right.
That's right.
This is, I mean, all around, this is a great project.
Then we think about how close this is to the senior center, literally, three blocks, three city blocks away, maybe four, so... On our bus route? On the bus route, exactly.
Town Hall, Dunkin' Donuts, bike trail, you know, churches, restaurants, so, which is the whole purpose of this, you know, I mean, again, my...
Why you don't want foot traffic?
I think that my, I don't know if I got that message across to the Planning Board the other night well enough, but it has to be one building at a time at some point.
Absolutely.
And I just said, "Look, this is the, this is going to be the biggest one that you'll be able to show off in town. And if this works the way I want it to, I think that people are going to want to have other buildings like this build."
No, and if I can just add, I mean, this is, you know, what we're trying to do on one end of town, what you've done at 21 Main Street, from what an eye saw that whole Uber properties was for a long time. People didn't even know how much land was there.
Right.
And now you have this in the middle. I mean, we're just, again, whether it's one building at a time, one area at a time, it's not going to happen overnight. But I got to tell you, it's, for some of us who've been, you know, and certainly for the three of us at this board that have been talking about things like this for some time, it, it's happening pretty quick.
It is, because, I mean, remember the old Gasco gas station on the other end where CVS is? We did that building, and now it's Milford Hospitals Urgent Care Center. I mean, 20 years ago, we did the old Bolin Alley and did that, the Papaginos and Fresenius. And then about a year ago, we tore down the old Robinson's floor covering and Hanson Electric Building, and we built 308 Main Street, which is now the air nose and throat in cardiology. So, you know, I'm saying one at a time, but I think we're up to five of them.
You did one at a time, but you...
Yeah, I did do one at a time, because I had to.
Kevin, first off, let me say thank you. Unbelievable, unbelievable. And I had a conversation, I've actually had many conversations with Mr. Valani over the last couple of days, and I said, "There's nothing worse than sitting at that traffic light. You have this beautiful town hall to your right. Thank God the convenience store is going to reopen, but you have that vacant building." Okay, and then, and I'm a member, currently, right now, a member of the school committee, but then you look at that building, and it's got shades up, shades down. You know, you got windows open, windows closed. I've toured the building. We toured it as a school committee, beyond needing work.
Yes.
And to see something like this, and I think what's, you know, there's a lot of things that are encouraging about this, but I think the thing that sticks out to me is that people in the community have reached out to me and said, "Well, what are they going to do with the main building?" Well, here it is, you know? And it's the same thing that Consigli Construction did. There's nothing, to me, nicer than driving down at night when that building on Summer Street is all lit up, that old building that they took down block by block and reconstructed. And, and I spoke about this before. We actually did a tour at Consigli Construction for people that had gone there for elementary school. It was jammed. People walked around the building and said, "Oh, this is where I went to second grade." This is exactly what you've done, the same thing. These may be apartments for over 55, but you've done the same thing. People are going to be able to not only walk by and say, "Jeez, that's where I went to high school," they're going to have fond memories of it. So you, you've, you've done some new stuff on this end of it, but the main structure, you've kept the nostalgia there for the people of this community. So I commend you for that. I really, really do. And it's just, I never expected anything like this. This is over the top. Really is. And, and again, it's, it's about bringing people to downtown, you know? It's about bringing people to the downtown area, and we need to do that. And you're right, one building at a time. It's not going to happen overnight, one building at a time. But we can do it. We can all work together, and we can do it. So again, just thank you. Beautiful job.
Thank you, Mike. Well, I don't know if there's any more questions or comments for the gentlemen. I think that we obviously, oh, do you have another question?
I just wanted to say what a great rendition. It gives somebody like myself, who can't look at 2D plans and, you know, overviews and see the segmentation. But I, I am also impressed that you're solving another issue. You're not looking just to put, you know, the residential over 55, but you've solved it by committing an incredible amount of space to 62 spaces, including green space. So aesthetically, you're trying to make it pleasing. You're also not trying to burden the neighbors or the other areas where some other buildings are going to have a challenge. They need to solve this problem in the way that you have here. But I want to go over the, the proposal is really one that was written in a way to try to encourage something unique, encourage reuse if possible. And if not, by right, as the, as the owner of that property, you, if town meeting doesn't meet, meet the two-thirds threshold, by right, what are you allowed to do? What's allowed to go there on that property today?
Commercial building.
Commercial.
With parking, it's what I showed you in the RFP. It's about 20, 20,000 to 22,000 square feet with the parking, two-story building.
All right. And by right, that would mean that you have the ability to take down and need to actually take down the old building.
Old building would have to go.
Would have to go in order to meet the current zoning requirements if this zone, if this isn't rezoned.
Right.
So it's something that town meeting ought to be mindful of, if their desire is the same as my desire to try to, and your desire frankly, to try to salvage that, that building and preserve it where people went to school. If we can do that, the town meeting is so inclined, as our legislative body, two-thirds is a high threshold, but I think you might be able to get that done, given what you're showing here. So that's important for folks to know that, you know, builders can't sit on properties forever.
forever, waiting for towns to rezone, and I appreciate your, your action and your working with Town and Town Planner, uh, to move on something that will allow you to preserve it rather than have to knock it down, okay?
Yeah, and I do think, Bill, that's the toughest message to probably get out there, is, you know, work, I'm a builder, I'm a developer, there are certain buildings that are not worth saving.
Right.
And there are certain buildings that you should...
Try.
Do this to, and it's based on the bones of the building, where it's situated, how it, you know, how can you do a connection to a building, uh, this one's a perfect building to...
Try to recover.
To do this, in my, you know, in my opinion, and to Mike's point, I didn't illustrate it yet, but I absolutely will have the wall washing lights and, you know, I want it to be a building that when people from other towns drive in, say, wow, what a great-looking building that is, I mean, that's, that's my intention.
Thank you.
I think it shows a cooperative effort on the part of your board and, uh, private industry to, uh, really start putting some signature pieces of property on Main Street and Milford, which has long had signature pieces of property, we forgot about them.
You're right, and, uh, we, you know, we talk about the speed at which we're gonna be able to do things, and we talk about one building at a time, but, you know, within my lifetime, uh, Main Street was a very vibrant, uh, Main Street, and its challenges and its fights against malls and internet sales, uh, have been significant, not unlike many, you know, Main Streets across the country, so this didn't happen in a day, the recovery is not gonna happen in a day, but with signature pieces like this, it may just be the impetus to get other developers looking at what's possible as well.
Well, I just don't want it to get lost either, that again, and I think you touched on it, Bill, and we've all touched on it, and, you know, this has been something, when Main Street comes up, that has been talked about for, again, a long time.
Too long.
And now, we're making decisions, we're moving quickly, we are, we're, we're putting our money where our mouth is, now, with that, you get judged one way or the other, but when, especially Kevin, and I've said this to you many times, the part that, that just puts a whole, wraps a whole red bow around this is, you're a Milford guy. Again, you could run your business wherever you wanted, you chose to come here, you, you raised your family here, you drive down the same streets we do, you sit at the same red lights we do, stuck in the same traffic we do, looking at either a beautiful piece of property or an eyesore as well, so you're experiencing exactly what we are, so the fact that, in the end, this is going to someone local who chooses to live here and raise their family here, and then you come and, again, all of your other buildings look great, and this just far surpasses anything that, you know, in, in my unprofessional mind in this business could even think of, and, uh, again, the fact that this all is gonna come down to a conversation on Town Meeting floor, really about, now, folks, 'cause again, for some of us, we've experienced these floor fights over this building for twenty years, now it's, we still have a chance to save the building, or we don't, that's where the strategy finally comes together, and honestly, I think you guys are gonna do very well. I think our Town Meeting, I mean, our Town Meeting members are super knowledgeable, they're as involved as you can get, and, I mean, before you get there, they're gonna know what's, what's on the line here.
Yeah.
And, uh, I just, I congratulate you, again, at some point, I, I hope the board makes a decision tonight, um, on the bid, and you guys can officially...
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, you bring that rendering to Town Meeting, the three of us will sell it, trust me.
You may ask you.
So, do we wanna take on the bid, and then we can talk about the article, or we can talk about the article at some other point, or whatever we need to talk about at this point?
I don't think you need to talk about the article tonight, but a, a motion to accept the bid from Lobus Corporation at the price of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, uh, I think would be the motion you would make, um, if that is, uh, the board's pleasure, and if the board passes it, then, um, we have a purchase and sale agreement that would be signed within thirty days, and then we could work on a convenient closing date, um, at that point.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Rick, um, if you might, just, um, as the chief procurement officer, can you just give me some background as to, you know, and for the folks watching, I've been here every meeting, so, I've watched it evolve, but I wanna just, uh, go through the process that we went through for the RFP?
Yeah, if the board remembers, prior to that, Town Meeting did approve an article, authorizing an RFP for the sale or the lease of the building, uh, beyond the direction of the Board of Selectmen, uh, that was passed at Town Meeting, and RFP was prepared, um, it was published not only in the Central Register, but twice in the, um, Milford Daily News, it was online, also on our website, we had a number of individuals and/or corporations or companies actually pull the bid, but we only received one proposal, and that was the proposal from Lobus Corporation. Uh, I reviewed the requirements of the bid, as did Town Council, all of the requirements were met by, uh, Mr. Lobus through his corporation, um, so all of the relevant elements were there, including the, the bid deposit and, and et cetera, so, uh, everything was, um, done as it needed to be done, and then we need to have it done, so, um, that's why we're here tonight, so, the board's prerogative now is to either accept the bid or not to.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from, uh, Lobus Corporation, uh, for the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, um, Lobus Building Corp., I wanna be very specific, uh, in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and consistent with the RFP that we sent out, there are some, uh, several proposals, and he is already acting on them, so I'm happy to, to do that and make that motion.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before Kevin, I'd like to, again, just say thank you, beautiful, beautiful rendering, and I, I'm sure it will come out that, that nice, and I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous, um, and again, thank you, gentlemen, this is, uh, this is a, this is a big turning point for us, and I'm glad to partner with you, Kevin.
Yeah. Hopefully you can sense that.
And, uh, we'll continue to work with, uh, your Town Planner and, uh, your Town Administrator and Town Council, so that there will be a written article to be placed on the warrant, so that, certainly within the timeline, that you get your warrant ready, and let us know if there are any barriers or, uh, speed bumps in the way, and we'll be glad to help.
Certainly will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Too bad you can't move in.
Bill and I can.
No, I still got, I still got a few years.
Can down this ta- this end also.
Yeah.
Not Gene, though.
Ladies, do one of you want?
Forty-two, forty-three, I think.
Yeah.
I'm up by a year.
Right, uh, next agenda item is the Town Administrator's report, as we go backwards, Rick?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just three items tonight, um...
We can wait a couple minutes.
Wait once.
Yeah.
I just wanna update the board on the, uh, Town Council search, uh, we received eleven letters of intent and resumes, mostly from individuals, a couple from law firms interested in the position, uh, these have been forwarded to attorneys Laura Mann and Jed Nosel, um, I spoke with Laura today, and had some email correspondence with Jed, they will be reviewing the applications this week, they have set up, uh, tentative dates next week to interview, um, candidates that they feel meet the qualifications in the job description, and that would be, um, fit to be presented to this board for your, um, our interview, they hope to have final candidates, again, interviewed next week, and they should have final candidates, at least three, to be interviewed by this board at your next meeting on Monday, March twenty-sixth, that, again, is a tentative timeline, um, they believe they could make that, but obviously, that could be subject to potential individuals being interviewed, not being available, schedules of both Jed and, and Laura, but, in speaking with both of them today, um, I think they understand the task in front of them, and, and I just wanna thank them publicly for taking on this task, to help us screen, uh, individuals for, you know, as you guys know, a very crucial position, uh, here in town, so, uh, I will be following up with them by the end of the week, and I'll report to the board once, uh, final interviews are set. Um, I have been informed by State Representative Murray and Senator Fatman that Governor Baker has signed the bills regarding the water company, there were two bills, one to allow the transfer of assets upon the, uh, purchase, and the second would allow the town to bond over a forty-year period to help, uh, pay for that purchase, um, I wanna thank Senator Fatman and Representative Murray for their efforts in assisting in the passage of these two bills, and then finally, uh, Mr. Chairman, we did receive from Governor Baker's, uh, office, our Chapter Ninety Local Transportation Aid Funding for fiscal year, uh, two thousand nineteen, we've been informed that the total funding will be two hundred million statewide, pending, obviously, final legislative approval, the apportionment for Milford will be approximately eight hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, so, that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, now, Bill, any questions?
No, just, uh, for the benefit of the folks that are listening at home, that those monies that, uh, Rick was just speaking about are what go towards the resurfacing of our roads and improvement of our roads and intersections, so, that's great news.
Mike?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, thank you.
Rick, um, I had a question, I received a call, and I think you folks in the building department have handled it, but can I get, or can you tell me now what you know, and then can I get a status update on forty-two Main Street, which is, again, we were here talking about Middle School East on this side of the road, but, um, I got a couple of calls from some neighbors on forty-two Main Street, and...
I think I can update.
I think you were spotted there, according to one of my sources, so, I think you know firsthand.
Yeah, I actually, I had the opportunity, 'cause I hadn't walked a building in a while.
Okay.
So I did walk it along with police, fire, inspections, assessors, and Board of Health.
Oh, okay.
So we did walk all, I believe, I wanna say there were thirteen units, um, each of the, uh, boards will be preparing a report, I have two of the reports, I'm waiting on a third, once I have those reports, I will, uh, obviously forward them to the board, um, there were some violations noted, um, by each of the departments, Board of Health Inspections, uh, and Assessors, um, the owner of the property also walked the building, he was there with us, so a lot of them were pointed out to him directly, um, and, um, I know the Board of Health and Inspections will be, uh, following up to see if their violations are corrected, um, and it will be recurring, I think, with inspections, the owner has been, um, willing to let us in, did let us in, um, so I wanna thank all of them and police and fire for their assistance, there were some fire violations also, so they're issuing a report also, so, this was done, I think, the last week or the week before, so, that's where we're at, um, there.
Okay, and it was brought to my attention that some of the violations at forty-two Main Street go back to, some of them as two thousand and one, so I'd like a full report on that, so we can talk about that, 'cause...
Sure.
I just wanna make sure, one, that's accurate information that I'm getting, I believe it is, but I also wanna make sure that, you know...
There's a question on a couple of the so-called units.
Yeah, two are legal, I mean, I'm, you, I understand you being diplomatic, but I appreciate that, but I, I just, we need to know the history.
Sure.
Because it's twenty eighteen, and if violations were issued in two thousand and one, I mean, that's even a few buil- building commissioners ago, so...
Okay.
All right, so I don't know how you wanna present that to us, but I think that's something, gentlemen, that, you know, as these things continue to get tackled on, if there's a pattern, or if there's a history, especially, uh, a sixteen-year one or seventeen-year one, um, we need an explanation.
Right.
'Cause that actually supers- I mean, that supersedes all of us that are here now, so, I'm trying not to be frustrated, but this is the stuff that, again, when people are calling and repeatedly saying that this is stuff taking place, and again, especially when we can look out this window and see the property, I think, uh, we need to know what's going on. Next is new business, um, regarding...
If I might, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, we did add the one add-on as an old business on the Town Meeting articles, if you'd like to...
Oh, yeah, gentlemen.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, no, 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 this was, this is really good, Rick, uh, contacted me later this afternoon, and I asked him if, uh, he asked me, and I said, please put it into our packets, it's, uh, Rick, I don't know if you wanna explain it, but it's really these seven articles that were...
Yeah, I think Reno DeLucio and his committee had made some recommendations, uh, he had discussed them with Town Council Moody, this is one that this board can approve, that is the combining of several of the annual recurring articles, for example, the ability of the Selectmen to issue five-year contracts, the ability of the Treasurer to do deeds in lieu of foreclosure, so, but what it would do is have one article, and presenting these types of articles, which I think there are seven listed here, as one article, so, we would be looking for this board to vote to approve that, Town Council's in the process of preparing a warrant, and then he'll prepare it accordingly.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm happy to try a lot of things, Reno DeLucio is former Town Planner, smart guy, he's helped us on, uh, trails, uh, that committee has worked really hard, so, you know, some of this is a work in progress, and my suggestion is, let's look at some of these recommendations, try some of them out, see how it works, and this one really is almost pro forma in the sense that there are things that we, we know from history, receive, uh, unanimous support, uh, from the town, and, uh, they're always allowed to challenge any aspect of it, so it doesn't change whether somebody can challenge it.
They can pull one out if they'd like.
Yeah, it just really says how we bundle it, so I'd be in favor of doing this, and I'd, uh, put a motion forward, uh, to combine into one article, uh, the things that Jerry has outlined here as a recommendation, and consistent with Reno DeLucio and that, uh, that committee's recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I would agree with Selectmen Buckley, I think anything that Reno DeLucio is involved, and in his committees are involved, and is, is always very well done, um, and I, I would feel very comfortable seconding that motion as well.
All right, great, thank you, um, I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous.
Thank you.
We can go from there, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is Article Three Recommendation, uh, this is giving all of the full-time, which is, uh, to the Town Clerk and the Highway Surveyor, uh, two percent, a recommendation of a two percent increase at Town Meeting, and all of the part-time elected, uh, two percent as well.
Move, Mr. Chairman, to support that Article Three Recommendation.
Which is well within guidelines, I would second that.
Yes, personnel board is recommending to...
Yes, absolutely.
Um, yeah, I don't know where that is, so, I guess we'll get to it.
There you go.
Okay.
Fireworks.
Yeah.
Boom.
Uh, next, we go back to the recommendation for fireworks, uh, Rick?
Yeah, we put out the bid as we do, uh, each year, uh, interestingly enough, only this year, one, there was only one bidder, it's the same company that did the fireworks last year, uh, I think the bid is five hundred dollars more than it was last year, so I would recommend the board accept the bid in the amount of seventeen thousand dollars from Atlas Pyrovision Entertainment Group, Inc., out of Jaffrey, New Hampshire.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we accept, uh, the Town Administrator's recommendation, move forward on the fireworks with the bid that, uh, was submitted.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous, considering we're gonna have a parade, we should, I think, it's vital we have our fireworks. Uh, next is a request from the Milford Youth Commission for a waiver of permit fees, uh, dear Town Administrator and Board of Selectmen, I'm writing to you on behalf of the Milford Youth Commission to inform the board of the request to waive the permitting fees for the following two companies and projects, one is Custom Alarm Service Incorporated for the installation of alarm surveillance and intercom systems, two to Gymnasium Design Co. for the installation of a slope fold curtain in the gymnasium, and to All Temp Systems Mechanical, Inc. for donating the plumbing work necessary for a washer and a dryer, in the basement of the youth center, All Temp is donating this entire job quoted at two thousand and fifty dollars, and to Brazza and Mancini for their electrical work with the washer and dryer.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, I'd second that, Mr. Chairman, as well.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous, um, Rick, can we also send a letter to All Temp and to Brazza and Mancini for their donation?
Yes.
I'm sure the youth center will as well, but I'd like our board to do that as well. Next, we have three requests for one-day licenses, the first one's from the Milford Performing Arts Center at one fifty Main Street, Carol Devendorf asks for this every year, uh, it's for March ninth, what are, I guess, a rain date of the tenth, uh, from six-thirty to eleven, and it's for wine and malt only.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous, second is for Saint Mary of the Assumption Church, Seventeen Winter Street in Milford, for their Saint Patrick celebration, uh, Mar- that's March tenth as well, and this is wine and malt only.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous, and we have one from Sacred Heart Parish, it's the Sacred Heart Women's Club, for their annual dinner dance, and that is April seventh in the parish hall from six to eleven, and this is for wine and malt only.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous, next, uh, I'm sorry, any, any additional new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, bring up an item of new business, it's not new to the, to the, to the country, and it's not new to, uh, schools across the, the nation, but, um, what I would like to do is recommend that, um, we look at, uh, we look towards the Chief of Police to bring in his recommendations, uh, for the upcoming budget, um, for how we might do a better job than might have been done in other schools across the country when, uh, some of these massacres... than might have been done in other schools across the country when some of these massacres are happening. I don't want to be one of those communities interviewed by news someday, talking about how we never thought it would happen here. Communities across the country have learned it does happen. So specifically, what I'm talking about is the five buildings, school buildings, safety, the safety of the kids. What I want is to make sure that whatever we do, and whatever we can do, is being done beyond some of the great work that's being done in terms of active shooter drills and all of that. But what I'm looking to do is create an environment where we know, and the community knows, that our kids are off limits, and that it not be, that our buildings not be the safest in the Commonwealth, but the safest on the planet. Our kids have to be off limits, and we know that we have an able and capable police department that have given the right tools and right opportunities. We can have officers in each of the buildings, and I think boards of selectmen, city councils across the Commonwealth should be talking about this. If we're not, I would feel negligent in my responsibilities as a leader of this community if we didn't talk about it. So that's my recommendation, that we engage with the chief of police to see what opportunities there are. And I'm not talking about, I don't want to get into the tactics here, because the tactics aren't necessarily mine to develop there. We have capable public safety officers, but how to bring these buildings, how to staff the buildings with police officers, such that our engagement time is shorter than it might otherwise be if the chief were given more tools, and also to look at what we can do over time to improve and prevent incidents from happening. There may be things we can do with our cameras, there may be things we can do with the glass, there may be a host of things we can do. And I am not talking about arming teachers with weapons. What I'm talking about is letting the teachers teach and putting armed professionals in our buildings, so that our response times are short, and that the people who are trained to do this every day, and most of them are former veterans as well, were trained in military, know how to react and know how to stop people who would try to bring our children harm.
Well, Bill, I really appreciate you bringing that. That was actually a note up here for me to bring up as well under new business, and if you folks are all right with it, I think we should bring the chief in at our next meeting, or at least have him present, again, much like Bill said, is there anything he's going without, if it's something he would do if he had the additional resources, but, you know, the FINCOM says 2.5%. This is one where we make the exception. We listen to what they need, if there's resources that they, additional resources that they need to either get additional bodies, or additional equipment, or additional tools. I think this is the time to have the conversation. I appreciate you bringing that up. Mike, I know you're still on the school committee for a little while longer, you know, I'm hoping that we can have a, if, either a serious dialogue, or at least get his feedback on if resources were, you know, infinite, this is what I would, this is what I would want.
Well, it's a serious problem. Look, it just happened in the library.
Yeah.
You know, a young girl sitting there just reading, and some unfortunate person with, you know, an illness, and she lost her life. You know, as a school committee member, I think we do a good job, I should say the police department does a good job, but there's always room for improvement. But one of the things, just using the high school as an example, I forget what the number is, but I want to say the high school has 89 exterior doors, and we have two people all day long, you can call them hall monitors, whatever you want, but once school is in session and locked down, they're literally walking around all day, banging to make sure the doors are locked, to, you know, Selectman Buckley's point. Somebody goes out and says, geez, I'm just going to run off to my car for a second, put something in the doorway, there's an entrance.
Play in.
You know, and so, yeah, I would agree with that. I think the chief would be more than willing to come in and sit with us and go over, you know, what he's doing, and what he thinks are areas that, you know, he may want to improve, and he needs our help and, you know, finances to do that.
And I think that's what the rule is, because you mentioned tactics. I don't expect him to come, nor do I want him to come, and talk about things that he shouldn't be talking about, or isn't comfortable talking about. We certainly don't need to know his master plan and how his staff reacts
Right.
to emergencies at schools or anywhere else. However, I think it's just, it's imperative, and the responsibility is on us to make sure that we're giving him all the resources he needs.
And it should be a pretty encompassing report that we're looking for, allows us to understand, so that we can understand what the officers will be doing, both when school is in session and not in session, right, because it's 180 days out of the year, then there's other things, right? So, you know, how might those officers be aligned and resourced? But I want to be clear, we're talking about the five school buildings, for starters.
Mike, anything else?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
If there, did you have any additional new business? Are you okay? Mike?
Actually, I just wanted to add one thing, and I think also what's important, not only with the police, is with the fire. As we all know, the fire department makes routine trips to the schools for fire drills. And I think when the fire department makes a recommendation that, and I remember years past, particularly the Woodland School, you know, there's boxes and desks that are in, you know, tucked away in places, and they say, these you really shouldn't be here. Those are also safety things that need to be addressed as well. If the fire department makes a recommendation, you got to get it handled, you got to get it out of there, you know? And we have a responsibility there as well.
Next agenda item is correspondence. First order of business is we received a letter of resignation from Thomas Morelli. Dear members of the board, I'd like to inform you that I'm resigning from my appointment as building inspector for the town of Milford effective February 23rd, 2018. Thank you very much for the opportunities for professional and personal development that you have provided me during the past few months. I've enjoyed working for the agency and appreciate the support provided to me during my time with the town. If you have any questions or concerns, please let me know. Sincerely, Thomas J. Morelli. For a motion to accept.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that.
And I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Nope, Tommy is a gentleman.
Good guy, good, good guy.
Right, second is from the Milford Police Association, a notice to begin contract negotiations. It's from Robert Tassino, president of the Milford Police Association. Gentlemen, the Milford Police Association Local 218 is requesting a forum to start contract negotiations as our current contract expires on June 30th, 2018. If possible, our negotiation committee would appreciate an audience with the honorable Board of Selectmen. I look forward to meeting with the board to discuss the upcoming contract. And we'll get together and we'll schedule that. Also, we have a letter of resignation from Ernest Pettenari. Dear Mr.'s Kincaid, Buckley, and Walsh, please accept this letter as my resignation from the position of Special Assistant to the Town Council, Contracts Negotiator, effective April 1, 2018. As you know, I am no longer engaged in the full-time practice of law, and I'm not able to continue to dedicate the time and effort which the position demands. I extend my sincere appreciation to all of you, and to attorneys Richard Valani and Jerry Moody, and the town's other elected and appointed officials, who have helped me make my work as the town's negotiator memorable and enjoyable. Thank you very truly, yours, Ernest P. Pettenari.
And is there a motion to accept that resignation?
Moved. You know, it's just a point of note that Ernie served the town well in helping with negotiations as associate counsel for those negotiations, and it's just, it's too bad that both he and Jerry are on the backends of their careers, looking to do other things, and those resignations come nearly back to back. I know that they didn't plan that, and I know that we'll work as hard as we can with outside agencies and council to bridge any gaps, and we've already talked about the schedule to close on hiring a full-time counsel, but now we have an associate counsel to bring on, and we should be talking about how to close that gap as quickly as possible. So I'm not sure how this position was filled. It was filled long before I came on.
Yeah.
It's been there forever.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe there's something, we put in the local paper, look for local counsel, and maybe you can get us a draft of a recommendation for a job description and salary or stipend that, how we've been funding it in the past. There's got to be, you know, a sharp local attorney who probably wants to participate in local government in addition to their law practice, as Ernie has for years.
No, and I think that that's a really good point, especially if we end up, if the chosen candidate, if we do have a candidate, and have candidates to interview on March 26th, if we do hire someone who's out of town, we are no longer going to have the luxury that we had with Jerry Moody, who would, if he wasn't in the building, would be at home watching our meetings and be here in five minutes when we made a motion to adjourn. So, again, if we hire someone, which I imagine we would possibly outside of our area, considering, I'm sure we have applicants from all over the place.
Very possible.
That it's possible that they're out of town, and, you know, night work becomes a whole different ballgame, so that's going to have to be a factor, too. So, an assistant, whatever this position is to be named.
I always called it associate counsel, but I'm not sure what it is.
I think it's labor council, but.
Labor council?
Yeah, because that's strictly what Ernie did, yeah.
All right.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I'll check on that.
All right.
All right. So you, did you make a motion, Bill, to accept?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, you know, Attorney Pettenari is, not only is he a Milfordian, he's very talented, he's a good person, our children grew up together, he's a good friend. And to Selectman Buckley's point, it's to lose both your main town council and your associate town council at the same time, we get some big shoes to fill.
No question.
And I'd like to personally thank Ernie for his years of service to his community.
Absolutely.
He's done a great job, and I know he loves his community, and it would be, it's going to be a big loss, and I wish him the best. I know that he calls it the backside of his career, another way of saying getting closer to retirement, but, you know, I think the three of us wish him the best, want to say thank you to him, and thank you very, very much.
Okay. No, and if we can get a letter drafted for Ernie as well, I think the three of us would like to sign that.
So that was moved, seconded?
Second. And I'll vote in favor and make that unanimous.
All right.
Any other correspondence?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right.
I'll move to adjourn.
Yeah, we do not have an executive session.
I'll second.
And I will vote in favor and make that unanimous. Have a good night, everyone.